Okay, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Library Board of Trustees on August 12, 2021. And just to keep safe with what's going on, we're, those of us that are present in the room are all wearing our masks and we're kind of spread out. And we're in a hybrid meeting, so we have Zoom and in-person. And I think then should we have a roll call?
Sure. Bianca Richards.
Present.
Dr. Malina.
Present.
And I'm going to text Dean and Annie.
Sorry.
It's okay.
I thought we were all here. I know Dave, David Jewens is excused tonight. Mayor Diana Mahmood is not able to join us tonight. So she's not here. And Dave's not here. Well, can I, I'll just kind of keep on going here. And then we have the, in present tonight, the Board President, the President of the Friends of the Library, Sally Kilby, and then also our two long-term librarians. Do you guys want to, I'll just say, yeah.
Maida Wong.
Maida Wong is here and Barbara Posner are in attendance. And then PJ Lutz is on Zoom here from the Friends of the Library. And we're waiting on.
And.
Annie and Dean.
And they both did confirm they are attending, so.
Yeah.
Can we go to, can we see if there are any public comments? So we can get that out of the way.
Are there any public comments?
There are no public comments.
Okay. And are there, are there any presentations?
No.
No. Okay, no presentations, no public comments. Um, okay, so we'll.
Yeah, I mean, I, we can start without them, but it's, I feel like we're gonna have to backtrack if we start, start without them. So let's maybe give them a couple more minutes. Sean, let us know if you get a text back.
Will do.
I just wanted to make a, just a comment. I went to in-person to the Friends Bookstore today. I was here at about, I don't know, about 3:30, maybe a quarter or four. And there was many, many teenagers, young adults who were in it. So I had to actually had to wait because there was too many of us in the bookstore. So I had to wait out, out in the hallway. But it was lovely to see, and they were buying books. Yes, so it was, it was very, it was very nice to see these young adults in there buying books.
That's great.
Yeah, so. And then, well, yeah, so there was, yeah, so there was about five of us in, yeah, and I was waiting and there was somebody else outside. So, yeah.
That's nice. I'm glad to know that they're trying to kind of maintain some distance among people. I don't really know if they are or not. So that's good to know.
Wasn't today the first day of school for the district? So how did it go? Was after, after school, the school gets out now at 3:30?
It was pretty quiet.
Yeah. It's a market.
I might have to ask them to not be out there. Well, I don't want to, I don't want to be disrespectful to everybody else's time. So let's get started without them, I think.
No, we will.
Discussion.
We're not gonna do, we're gonna, we're reversing, we're reversing the agenda tonight. So we're gonna start out with the discussion. So do you want to, you'll lead?
Yeah. Yeah. So as everybody knows, and I hope everyone had a chance to at least look at the material that I sent out. But we have had on our work plan for at least this year, if not last year, too, the, the need to look at the, the board's charge, the ordinance of the municipal code. Okay, we got somebody. Let's see who just joined us.
We have Dean.
Okay, so I'll restart over.
Hey, you want to have at least a two of them?
Yeah, I mean, there's almost no point in talking about it. Yeah, we need everybody. And Mario, just so you know, did I already say this? The dean has a limited amount of time tonight that he can be on with us. So we will.
Sorry about that. So what do we have to do to establish a quorum? How many do we need?
Three.
Three. So we have a quorum?
Yes, yes.
Okay, then I'm gonna move approval of the minutes.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any, any discussion?
Yeah, any. Right, so it's moved in second that the minutes of the regular meeting on July 8th have been moved. Thank you. I can just do the roll call. Bianca, yes, Dean?
Yep.
Dr. Malina?
Yes.
Okay, so that passes.
Great.
Minutes. Okay. So shall we go then to?
Yep.
Number five.
Yeah, so we're gonna look at number five on the agenda, which is our, our, our charge to review the board's charge, the South Pasadena Municipal Code and the statutory, statutory authority for the Board of Trustees. And I did send out a package of information, which it was, it was long, but hopefully the most important parts of it were, were useful. So if you look at the first page of that packet that says, review the board's charge, SPMC, statutory authority. Basically, we've organized it into some questions that we think we should try to specifically answer. Some observations that I had as I did research into other boards.
Can I just, PJ and Dean, are you aware that Maida and Barbara are in attendance with us? Because you guys might have missed the very beginning. Yeah.
I did miss the very beginning.
Pardon me?
I did miss the very beginning and no, I was not aware of that.
Yes, so, so, yeah, Maida and Barbara are here because they have a lot of long-term institutional history and experience, lived experience. So we've invited them. Oh, and Sally, Sally is here. Sally's always, Sally's always here, so.
Annie's gonna be hopping on in just a moment.
Okay. So some observations that I had as I went through and looked at ordinances from other libraries, and I'll talk a little bit more about my thoughts about that. And then just some recommendations, because I didn't want us just to be, you know, talking in circles. So I don't think that, I think the purpose really is to make sure that we have an ordinance that is in sync with the state statute and bylaws that also fall in line with that. And we may or may not have changes that we want to make to the ordinance. And if, in the case, then that would be something, we would go back and draft those and, and talk to the city manager and the city attorney about it, because those would then have to go to have a public hearing and be voted on at a council meeting. So I guess what I would like to just start with is to give you a sense of my thinking about this. You know, we've been talking for a long time about whether we're, well, we call ourselves an administrative board. And if you read the literature, the two distinguishing features of an administrative board are that they hire and fire staff and that they actually prepare the budget. So you guys don't do either of those things and I think never have. So what I found, both for us and for many other libraries, and Sean, you could put that slide up on the screen for me now, is that in practice, even libraries that have considered themselves, boards that have considered themselves administrative, really are not. So this is a little updated chart. This chart is in the packet, but I've updated it in the days since I sent out the packet. And you can see there, although, all the ones in red are ones that I actually spoke to the library director and confirmed their, their status. But you can see there's a number of libraries that either are in, in practice, they're advisory, they were administrative, and now they're advisory, they actually made the official move from being administrative to being advisory. Gwen Dory, she sent me her packet, which was interesting to see. So I guess that what I learned from all of this is that the, the distinction between administrative and advisory is sort of not, it's not that important. And it really only, you know, we can put whatever we want into the ordinance. It doesn't, we don't really have to focus on administrative or advisory. It doesn't really matter. I mean, if we happen to put into the ordinance that you prepare the budget in the city library, and then by default, you're an administrative board. But if we don't have, if that's not among your duties, then you're not technically an administrative board, you'd be an advisory board.
So Kathy?
Yes.
I thought that you prepared the budget, we approve it, and then it goes to the city council.
Right, which is.
So kind of in between.
Yeah.
And the other thing is, while we don't necessarily hire and fire the librarian, I thought that we played a role in, in that process.
Yes, you do. That's how, that's how the ordinance is written. And I think, though, what we should do, again, I feel like there's some discrepancies between the ordinance, the bylaws, and, and then what that creates is confusion at the city's level. So I think the, the purpose of this is clear that up in the ordinance, like what exactly is your role and make sure that we spell it out. And again, very few libraries in practice are administrative. Very rarely, unless it's like a district library, like Altadena, do they actually hire and fire a director or any staff. It's just very uncommon for that to be the case in, in, in public libraries. And you can see how many have shifted from considering themselves administrative to advisory over the years. And the other thing is, just to, to set the stage, which I didn't put in the packet, but in your manual, the, the trustee manual, there's a section, section 2.2 that describes the difference between advisory and administrative. And it explains that this board is administrative with some minor differences. But the minor differences all make you an advisory board. So it's basically, they say you're administrative, but you don't do the things that, that technically make up an administrative. Sorry, Dean. Is he talking, oh, no, he's away from the desk. So basically, I just, I would like to get away from this, what seems to be an emphasis on advisory versus the focus on what it is that the board does. And if then it turns out that what the board does is an advisory board, then that's great. And if it turns out that what the board does is administrative, then that's, then that's what you are, you know? And get away from this weird hybrid thing, because I don't think it's necessary. I think you just need to determine what you are, what you, what you do, and then document it correctly so that we all are on the same page and, and everyone understands. So some of the questions that I thought we should answer and look at, not necessarily in this order. I think the order is that we should look at the state statute together just to go through it and see what is, what, at the big high level, is either a must for boards or a, you may do these things. So, but, but I think we will need to look at and determine what is the role of the board in selecting the library director? What is the role of the board in the budget, which, you know, we already have a role and we can either continue with the same role or change it? Who has final authority for decisions about spending funds donated to the library? You'll see in the state statute, to me, it seems very clear that the board has the discretion to spend those funds. But we have been told differently by different city managers, that you had to go to council to get approval. But the state statute, to me, is very clear that no other body has authority over those donated funds. So that's an important thing that I think we need to establish and make sure it's in our ordinance.
Yes.
In fact, the reference in the ordinance contradicts that state law. So I don't know how that came to pass, but. And then again, we might want to address the, what authority the board has regarding the building and artwork in and around it. This would be our chance to think about that and perhaps put something about that in the ordinance so that we, we settle that question for all time, or at least for some time. And also similarly, what is the board's authority regarding library grounds? And the reason I have that on there is because we've been talking, as you know, about the issues we have on the immediate exterior of the library with behaviors that are not compatible with what that space is meant to be used for. So we've been talking with the city manager and the police chief and the community services director about ideas about, you know, changing our code of conduct to include those exterior spaces. So that's just something to kind of think about. So my recommendation is, would be that we review and discuss the key elements of the state code and then do the same with our municipal code, just to make sure we all see what's there and then look at the bylaws. And again, I think our biggest, our big overarching goal is just to update the municipal code to make it more specific about the roles and responsibilities so that they're clearly defined and we don't keep having questions about what, what you guys have, what's your purview and what's not your purview. And I think that most boards, whether they're administrative or advisory, typically focus on policymaking. I mean, that's sort of the, you know, policymaking, there's some, actually some really good examples of bylaws and other material from some of the other libraries that I thought we might want to, you know, crib or borrow a little bit.
Kathy, Dean has a question?
Yeah, sorry, Dean, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. So I have, you know, being new to the board, I have some question about when we talk about our role. For example, when we looked at the budget, we didn't put together the budget. We discussed the budget that you had put together and we asked questions about it, but I don't think we actually made any changes to it. So that doesn't seem like we created the budget, unless I'm missing something.
No, you didn't. And that's one of the.
Right, that's one of the two key indicators of whether we're administrative or advisory.
Right.
So it, it does seem to me, and maybe I'm, I'm just repeating what you've been saying this whole time, that we are in fact clearly an advisory board. Does anyone feel that we're different than that?
I, I agree with you, Dean, because we don't have authority over the budget. We can make a recommendation, which then goes to the city council. And I believe the same is true for librarian. We don't actually hire and fire the librarian. She is an employee of the city. So in that sense, I do think we are more advisory than anything else. My, my question for you, Kathy, is you talk about the ordinance. Who writes the ordinance?
I don't know who wrote this originally. I don't know, probably the city attorney and.
So, okay, but I guess what I'm getting at is, we, we might make recommendations as to what the ordinance would look like, but isn't that also the function of the city council to?
Yes.
Adopt?
Yes, absolutely. So if we, if we want to make to the ordinance, we would, it would be, it would have to go to city council and it would be a public hearing and they would have to adopt it. But I believe, so as an example, the Public Safety Commission, they did a lot of work on their ordinance last year and made a number of changes. So the council, I mean, obviously, we would need to speak with the city manager and the city attorney and, and probably the city manager would talk to council one-on-one a bit if we're doing anything very different than what we already do and not just kind of clarifying. But I think that the city council, you know, would be supportive of any changes that, that we make, or at least would be willing to, to listen to any changes. But certainly, they would be supportive of clarification of existing responsibilities. But yes, it's, if we would draft it and then they would, they would review it and approve it. So Dean, yeah, I think that, I mean, again, that's what I said, that's what I found. There are very few true administrative boards. And I don't know why boards like to cling to that title. I, I don't know what that's about, but the fact is this.
Power.
Yeah, I guess so. It makes them feel like, you know, I don't know. There's a lot of drama around it. The libraries that have moved and done this official, like, you know, revisit, that some cities have had a real, a real struggle around it. But again, I mean, I think that our bylaws and our ordinance are not completely off top. You know, there's a few things there that don't make sense to me. But I think it's really more that we need to make sure that there's a lot of clarity around. So what are, you know, what do you do with the city, hiring the city librarian? Because it hasn't been done in recent years, you know, like the city librarian, the last librarian never had a performance evaluation, even though that's one of the responsibilities of the board. So is that or isn't that? You know, are you gonna do it or not do it? And that's what we need to, I think, talk through. But I would like, I think it would be helpful to look through the state, the state statute, which is in your packet. I only pulled out the key elements. There's other pieces to this, obviously, that I think are not so relevant. But I think it gives you a good idea of, of what the state, their intent was for library boards. And many of the library, libraries actually just, their ordinance might literally say, see the state statute, right? But the state statute is very, very broad. And so I think that's where some of the problems come in, is that it's so broad that if you just transfer it as is to our ordinance, it makes a very weak and strange ordinance. So there must be a board, that's a fact. There must be meetings, that's a fact. And then pretty much everything, well, then the next things, you may enforce, make and enforce rules, regulations and bylaws, but you don't have to have bylaws. But I think we obviously should. You may administer any trust declared or created for the library and received by gift, device or bequest and hold in trust or otherwise property situated in the state or elsewhere and dispose of the property for the benefits of the library. So these are all things that, again, if, if we want them in our ordinance, we can make, put them in our ordinance, but I don't know that they are now. Purchase a personal property. This is kind of a weird one, because obviously you don't purchase things. So I think this is actually in our ordinance and I would say we would take it out. The Board of Library Trustees may purchase necessary books, journals, publications and other personal property. Purchase a real property, you may do that. The board has incidental powers that we would want to define again in our ordinance. And then disposition of gifts and bequests. All money acquired by gift, device, bequest or otherwise for purposes of the library shall be a portion to a fund to be designated the library fund, which we do have in the city. There's a fund, you know, where they hold donations for us and shall be applied to the purposes authorized in this chapter. Some gifts may not be paid into the fund, but that's not really, you don't have to worry about that very much.
So now, where, so then where have we been off where, when we wanted to?
Spend it.
Spend it, we had to go to city council.
Last thing, section 18953, payments from the library fund. Payments from the fund shall be made upon warrants issued after due audit by and an order from the library trustees. The warrant shall be signed by the president and secretary of the Board of Trustees. The treasurer of the municipality shall pay such warrants, and these are my underlines, not, not from the statute, without any further order or warrant from any other authority. So to me, that seems pretty straightforward, that, that those funds are in your control.
Yes, they're in our hands.
Um, yeah. And again, the bylaws are, not the, excuse me, not the bylaws, the municipal code contradicts that a little bit. So I think we should clean that up. I, I don't know if the city would, will fight us on that, but I mean, to me, it's a legal opinion and if the city attorney, you know, is.
So Kathy?
Yeah.
You said that these are the pertinent clauses.
Yes.
Is there a clause in the state statute that says that municipalities may choose to ignore and bury from these strictures?
No, I do not believe so. I mean, I can double check that, but no, I don't think so. In fact, there's, there's a, there's case law from Monterey Park. In the eighties, the city council fired the moderate, you know, got eliminated, the board of trustees, because they didn't like what they were doing. And the board of trustees sued and won. So, yeah, the state, there have to be boards and they have to do, you know, they have to be able to do these things should they choose to do them. And then obviously, there's things they must do, which are, again, it's very, the things you must do are very few. The things you may do are broad as can be. So that's the challenge is then, you know, deciding of that broad list of things that you may or may not be responsible for, what are the things that we want to do? So I think then we would look at our municipal code, which is on page seven of the packet, just to see what it says. I mean, it's, again, I think this is where we need to do our, our work and make this a document that really does give us information about your role and responsibility. So public libraries will be administered, administered by a board of trustees, yes, obviously. Prepare such bylaws, rules and regulations as may be necessary for the administration of the library. That's all coming from the state statute. Review and submit an annual operating budget to the city manager. That's what you already do. Well, I mean, I guess I submit, I mean, the city manager, the city librarian submits it. So maybe we, we want to word that differently.
Yeah, can we just put it, some other adjectives, review and submit, couldn't we?
Well.
A little bit.
Yeah, I mean, we, we review it and then it gets submitted pending our, after, after our review, so.
Right, yeah.
I'm not sure that matters that much, but.
Okay. Purchase and acquire books, journals, maps and other supplies for the library consistent with the budget. So again, that's coming straight from the statute and it doesn't really make sense to me. There may be libraries where the board, you know, a very tiny library that doesn't have enough staff, where the board takes on that role, but that has never been something the board, here, yeah.
I, I think that there, there's a general aspirational aspect to this. And I, as an attorney, I like specificity. So I appreciate what you're saying. A lot of this specificity can be included by simple addition of a few words here and there. For example, the word authorize in front of purchase in, in subsection D. Authorize purchase and acquisition of books instead of purchase and acquire. Review and submit annual budget through, to the city manager, through the librarian. You know, so a few words here and there can, can add that specificity and, and administrative function.
Yeah.
To, to what is missing here, because it is, it is vague.
And, and.
Those laws are vague.
Makes it simple, yeah. So that's good. Those are good suggestions. So, and then this item E is the role that you theoretically have, have played in the city librarian hiring. So we should look at this. Appoint an ad hoc committee.
Kathy, Annie has raised her hand.
Oh, sorry, Annie. Oh, it was for this next item. So go ahead, if you want to finish reading. I wasn't sure if you were gonna read it.
Well, every, I just, yeah, I mean, for the benefit of the public, who may or may not, not that, probably. But, um, appoint an ad hoc committee to recruit, screen and select candidates for the position of city librarian. Make recommendations to the city manager with respect to the appointment, suspension or removal of the city librarian, who shall serve as a department head under the direction of the city manager. And then the bylaws, I believe, is where it says that you're gonna do the city librarian's performance evaluation. So again, it's a little confusing that there's directives in the bylaws that I would rather see all of the authority documented in the ordinance and the bylaws be more procedural piece, because it just seems like if it's in the bylaws, then you guys could change it at any time. And, and that seems strange to me a little bit, anyway.
So, so if we were to do an evaluation of you, again, that would be advisory to the city manager.
Yeah, that's, yeah, it does say that in the bylaws. It's not, it actually, the way that the bylaws read, I believe it says, if the city manager asks you to do it, you would do it. But there's a whole, you know, evaluation form that's in there. It's, and you guys are chatting. But there's a whole, you know, evaluation form that's in there, it's, and you guys are chatting and nodding. In your experience, have they ever made an ad hoc committee?
Yes.
So they had, they did, so they would create a committee and would that happen? At what stage of the process would that happen?
Yeah. So.
Talk loudly.
So they did this.
You guys made us, made up while I was talking.
So they, they did at one, for one of the recruitments, um, that was. Many years ago and they, the board did create an ad hoc committee. They included, if I remember correctly, members from the board, the friends. And possibly, I, I'm not really sure who else, but they, they did. Um, create this committee and go through the process to, to screen some candidates. The city manager was definitely part of that. Did they, did they have been multiple candidates that they forwarded to the city manager to choose from or did they?
Yes.
Okay, so like Dean said, though, it may just be a matter of, of saying may appoint. An ad hoc committee, you know, so that it's, I guess, not sure, it just seems like we should. If you, we should be clear about what your role is so that you can exercise your authority, you know, I, I feel like.
What, do we, do we know why that we haven't done that, uh, coming forward?
I don't, I don't know why, but I believe it's that. Some of the boards weren't fully aware of the, when they had made these, these rules. Um, that, that board was very aware, that the president was very aware. Um, on that ad hoc committee, they even included staff to, as part of that committee. To recruit and, and select this city librarian. But then subsequently, there are different boards that were, you know, appointed and, um.
Although the board, some board members, usually the president, has been on every. Um, interview panel for the city librarian that I can remember.
Yeah, see, that's where I think we're not being consistent and it's confusing, right?
So maybe we, maybe what, well, I'm not sure, what do you guys think? I mean, should it be more specific? More vague? I mean, I don't know which, which direction to go in, but it seems like. We shouldn't have things in there that aren't done consistently. Uh, and it could be that it's not possible to do it, like you said, because of the makeup of the board. Maybe you have a board that for whatever reason is not quite up to snuff or doesn't, just doesn't do it, so I don't, I'm not sure what the answer is.
Well, but, but we're all appointed by the city council.
Right.
So I would think that we should be able to do this and if we are not up to snuff, why, it's the city council's fault. For appointing us inappropriately.
Yeah.
I do think that the board should, um, have a committee and, and help recruit and interview the librarian. I mean, it seems to me that's one of the. Places where we can add value to the city.
Yeah, and I, and I, and I have, I have to agree and, and I, and I'm more about consistency, so from, you know, uh, board. To board to board, I think it should be very spelled out and being consistent, so there isn't any confusion, so then we.
I agree.
Leave, leave it as is then, basically, the, you know.
Do you want, but this says may, should, do we want may or do we want shall?
No, it doesn't say may, it just says, it says, appoint an ad hoc committee to recruit, screen and select candidate. For the position of city librarian.
Some of the. Function of that, that whole process also may have been, uh, attributed to different city managers over the years.
Yes, that's.
May have interpreted this differently or, or the city managers didn't know that this is the board's charge. And so they move forward.
Well, that's why we need to be consistent, so that, you know, when we do have a change in leadership, that some of the bylaws just stay consistent.
Well, and that, and that it's, yeah, and that it's again, not open to interpretation. And I don't think this one is, I mean, this one is really straightforward, so why it's not been happening is, is, I don't understand, but. Um, so that one is pretty straightforward, um.
Kathy, I would, um, also want to see added in there just the performance review for the city librarian as well. Um, I'd love that to be a consistent yearly performance review, I feel like it gives. A good place for us to kind of speak to all the work there, is it included in the, a different section?
Um, well, so the bylaws, um. Uh, where is it? Upon, this is in the bylaws, so again, to me, it's confusing that there are things in the bylaws that aren't in the ordinance. That can, that just, I don't understand that, um. It says upon the city manager's request, provide input for the city librarian's job performance review. But yes, why don't you put that in the ordinance and just say, provide input? I mean, again, this would be something we would have to, I mean, the, it's input, it's not, the city manager doesn't have to. Take it or leave it, and you know, I mean, you should be, if you think that's a role that you should have, then we should put it in the ordinance that, that. That you're going to do that, that you're going to provide input. And I would think a good city manager would want that input, so. But right now it's in your bylaws, not in the order.
I, I think given the fact that we meet with you pretty much monthly. Um, we should definitely be giving some input to the city manager on your performance, we might be in a better position to evaluate that than. The city manager.
So, so you guys would agree that we would want that in the ordinance?
Yes, okay.
Think so.
So maybe we should change it, not upon the city manager's request, we should maybe re, we need to reword it.
Yeah.
So that.
Say, yeah, yeah, what we can do is, uh, after this meeting, draft. Work on this a little bit and maybe Dean, I can reach out to you.
Sure.
First of all, um, and then we can come back at the next meeting and I can, in the meantime, talk to the city manager and tell her this is where we went with this. Um, and then we can, you know, vote on the recommendation to the city. Uh, what else is in the, um, in the municipal code? Um, so this is the one where I think it's not in keeping with the state law, it says accept money. Personal property or real estate donated to the city for library purposes, subject to the approval of the city council. I don't know if that's true, so that's a question I think for the city attorney. Or maybe the accepting the money is that they're, I guess, accepting the, the, the donation maybe is at their discretion. But it doesn't address the spending and I think that's the piece we need to address and that's the piece that seems very straightforward in the state statute. And we could just pull it over from the state statute and put it in ours, cause I think you guys.
That.
Charge of that money, right?
I, I think we should also, while we're at it, add a destination. Where, where do those monies go? Where does that property go? Where does that real estate go in what name? I think that should be.
This, this.
I think it should be there, cause right now, it's like, yeah, we can, we can take it, sure.
Yeah, the state statute actually is pretty clear, it says it, it should, it says, uh.
On page forty, on page five.
Yeah, gifts and, uh, disposition of, uh, all money. Rules, regulations, trust, administration of trusts and disposal of property. Uh, you may administer any trust declared or created for the library and receive by gift, device or bequest and hold in trust or otherwise. Property situated in this state or elsewhere and where not otherwise provided, dispose of the property for the benefit of the library. The funds, if you get actual funds, it says that it has to go into a fund, a designated fund called the library fund. Um, and that the funds have to be used according to other parts of this chapter. Um, so it does say that it, it has to go into something called the library fund and we do. I mean, I guess we do have a library fund, but with the Mullen and the Rowan funds, those are in their own accounts, they're not a bit, but it's very clear that it's. Ro- Ro mine library funds, it's not, you know, it's clear that it's not for anybody else's use. Um, but yeah, let's, let's look at that Dean and make sure we get that right.
I saw some of the other municipalities just reference this whole code and say, according to this code. I mean, does that make it more consistent since then we're just really abiding by like. State.
I agree.
Yeah, I think so, I think as long as, uh, I, my only issue is that in some cases the state statute is so broad. That I think we, we want to make sure we don't put in something so broad that we're back to where we don't really know what it means. Uh, in this case, it's very straightforward and yes, I would say we just, we just pull it over. Exactly the same statute, you know, use the same basic statute that's in the state law. So we can look at that a little more closely and, and yeah, we can look at some of the other library examples to see what they have done, um. This last one, G. Yeah, so I think these are leaks, I think the, the, um. Accepting money, personal property or real estate and being subject to the city council. We'll have to look at the state statute just to make sure that that is true and then I think we should add this statute about. How to dispense, you know, who has the authority to spend the money. Um, and the last one is a little bit weird because you guys don't do this to my knowledge. Contract with schools, county or other governmental agencies to render or receive library services or facilities. Subject to the approval of the council and that's coming from the state statute, I believe, but.
I think again, it's, we, we review and advise.
Yeah.
We're, we're not doing these things, we're not signing the contracts, we're not negotiating the contracts, but we're reviewing the need. And giving input and advice.
Just throw in a couple of words and add a couple new ones and we're, we're good to go after all this, like, what are we doing?
But, uh, but going back to that though, Dean, uh, on G, what about the subject to the approval of the city council, isn't this something like, um?
Again, cause we're not, we're not going to do these ourselves, so everything is going to be subject to the approval of city council, but. We are, as Kathy has pointed out, we're an advisory board, so we're here to review and give advice. And then it's up to the city council to actually take the action.
And I think if you change the language to review and advise, you don't need to say subject to approval. Because the reason you have to say subject to approval is because, you know what I mean, you're, it's, you're saying you're actively going to contract. So of course that has to be approved by, but if you're just reviewing and advising, that's.
Yeah, well, since, since we've got people there who have historical knowledge. Has the, the board of trustees ever actually done? Like, have we said, we're going to do something with the, with the, uh, middle school? And, and actually entered into an agreement with the middle school to do something?
No, no, they're both shaking their heads no. And they've been here a long time, so they would, they would know, no, no offense, long time, um, okay.
Can you apply that to F two then?
Yes.
If, if we're not allowed to advi- accept the money, can we pr- make a recommendation, like if someone wants to give the library something, should we be just kind of. Providing some of our.
You know, I think that one though, um, I, I, I think that is Annie, where we would actually do it, we would technically. Accept it, it doesn't mean we're going to own the account it goes into, that's where we will add specificity is where it goes. After we accept it, but it's like, I, I've got a court of honor, Eagle Court of Honor this Sunday. I'm, we're giving a new flag to the War Memorial Building, I'm going to give it to Diana, I'm going to put it in Diana Mu Mu's hands. But she's not going to keep it, she's just accepting it on behalf of the city.
Yeah.
So that's. Yeah, likewise, we also develop policies about what we're going to accept, right? So again, those are advisory, we, we give you an outline Kathy and somebody comes to you and says, I want to give you a book. And you look at it, you say, well, it doesn't meet our, our policy guidelines, so we're not going to accept that.
Right.
Exactly.
Yeah. Okay. Um, so then the next thing is to probably then look at the next page, page eight, which is the bylaws. Where it says the duties of the board include. And again, my concern is that this should be consistent with the ordinance. And, 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 and is it necessary to state things twice?
It, it can, it's two, there are two documents, so let's state it, but as you just said, you gave us those words, consistent with. The municipal code.
Okay, so what's on here, let's see, preparing bylaws, that's straight same language, uh, as the, as the code. Um, appointing.
Prepare such bylaws, rules and regulations consistent with the municipal code is maybe necessary for administration of library. And, and I, I don't mean to, you know, steamroll over these things if people have other thoughts, it's just, I've, I've been drafting bylaws for thirty years, so.
I think it's helpful to me, I'm sure, I don't think anybody's shy, I don't think, I think if, if Mario or Bianca.
I know, Mario is such a shrinking violet, you know. Actually Dean, I really appreciate your experience and wisdom, uh, with this stuff, because I think you're doing, you're doing all the right things and I.
Yeah.
Appreciate the help.
It sounds good to me.
Um, so again, it's, 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 they, it's a restatement of the, the role that you play in the, uh, city librarian. Hot, you know, selection, so we just want to make sure that's consistent with, with the, uh, with what we've said before. Uh, make recommendations for the appointment, suspension or removal of the city librarian, so maybe that's. And then the next one is upon the city manager's request, provide input for the city librarian's job performance review, I mean, it seems to me that we could. I mean, if you're giving input about the city librarian's job performance.
I think. Yeah, I, I think we, we just, we, as you started out by saying Kathy, we tie these two together, we make them consistent with each other. So whatever change we made to the municipal code, we'd make to the bylaw as well, but I do like having them as two separate. Points, cause they really are, although I would say that maybe we go a step further and say, instead of upon the city manager's request. I think we just do it annually, we should, we should do a review, cause.
Yeah, definitely, I think Bianca already, yeah, Bianca already said that, that it's not, you don't wait to be asked, you're just going to do it, that's going to be your job. Um, the budget, uh, presented, present an annual report to city council.
But are we going to change, review the annual budget, I think we need to.
Yeah, we're going to make it match, yeah, we're going to make it match the word, yeah, yeah, okay. Um, I'm more now looking for things that are just here and completely off the rails or not on the rails or whatever the case may be. Um, so the budget is covered and the annual report is a new thing that we haven't seen before. Um, although the state statute has, there's a piece that does require. Reporting to the state library, which you guys don't actually do, the sta- the staff do that. Uh, but a report to city council, which you do, um. Provide input to the city librarian on library needs and traditions and community attitudes and values. There's some nice stuff from some of the other libraries that are similar to that, that I really liked, but, um, but that's fine, I mean, that's. Yes, that's, that's part of your role and it makes sense to me that that's not in the ordinance because it's very. You know, touchy feely, it's not something you would put in the law. Um, promote library interest within the community, that's one of your jobs. Um, support funding at a level adequate for well qualified staff, a well balanced collection and a well maintained building.
Uh, just the word support, um, I'm not really clear what that means, so.
I don't either.
Know if you have more thoughts on, I mean, I can interpret that, um, for us, you know, wanting.
I mean, it, it, it sounds like it means advocate.
Yeah.
To the city.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it would mean at, things like, what, it's, it, it, this is one thing we actually do do. We, we've advocated to the city for additional funding, we've discussed the reasons for the need for that additional funding. We're working hand in hand with PJ and, um, and Sally with the friends of the library to bring in funds. Uh, we're, we're in, in transparent communication with them about that, both in the immediate need as well as in the twenty first century committee. So I think that, that we do support, um, funding at an adequate level.
Well, and maybe advocate, advocate is a word that's dangerous because you're an appointed body.
That's why we don't say advocate, we're saying.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
It could also be interpreted as like, I have to give money as.
No, that, that's, that's not child support, it's not like child support.
No.
We're not supporting the library, we're supporting funding. Yeah, I, I think that gets back to the whole thing about the budget, so we review and advise on the budget. And I think that if we thought.
And I think that if we thought the budget was inadequate, we would say to the city council, the library needs more money for the following things. It's part of our job is, is doing oversight and giving advice.
Yeah, we're, we, we are, um, a- and again, we do have other resources. There's the city council. There's the Mezrel. There's the percent for library thing that we've been talking about, uh, looking into. So all of these, um. Uh, and, and working with the friends. All of these are ways that we support the funding. We don't do the funding. We don't create the funding. We don't, uh, provide the funding, but we do support.
If there are any other language that you see Kathy in other bylaws, I'd be interested in seeing that in lieu of.
Okay, yeah.
And then I just have, what about, um, in the one about promote library interest within the light, the community? But don't you feel like we, we kind of do a lot of, of some liaison work? On that we are kind of a, you know, like I know like with the, 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 the friends. We do a little bit of liaison or, um, like when we did with, um. Uh, you know, self passing new beautiful liaison. So maybe we could, um, because I, instead of just promote library interest. I, I'd like to see us maybe use some other kind of words in there.
And there are, there are some nice ones in, that are about kind of the role that the board has for. Promoting and advocating for and, um. Teaching people about the library and its services. So there are some nice things in other people's bylaws. So maybe Bianca, we want to look at that.
Yes, better words, yeah.
I mean, again, we're going to come back with something to everybody. So, you know, I can talk to Bianca about that offline and. Come up with something and then everyone will have a chance to, to see that the next time we meet. So I'll put a little ER right there. Um, and then last, uh, develop and adopt written policies which govern the operation of the library, which we do, although in practice. This is another thing we were talking about, the staff and I, because in practice, it depends on the board. I mean, a lot of, you know. We're working on policies now that the staff have to draft the policy because it maybe isn't something this board has the knowledge of. So I don't know if there's a different way to say that.
Well, we develop and adopt. We're developing it. We're not drafting it. Developing, meaning we are. Preparing the, the overall concept for then others to, to build.
Okay, good.
I'm a developer. I'm not a, I'm not necessarily the construction company building something that I've developed.
Okay, good. As long as it's not ambiguous, like to me, I just can't always tell. To me, I thought, is that weird? I, okay.
As much as I like specificity, you want to have, you want to have language that provides enough flexibility that the board can. Uh, I, 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 from what I've seen the past few months, we have a fairly activist board here. Of people who have strong opinions and, uh, an intention to propel the library forward. As opposed to rubber stamp whatever comes through the, the room.
Yeah.
If we do rubber stamp a little bit.
So if we go back to our, uh, list of kind of. One. Um, I think the questions we have answered, we answered. What is the role in selecting library director? What is the role of the budget? Uh, we need to look into a little bit more at the final authority for decisions about spending funds. But I think it's pretty clear in the statute, but we will have to run that by city attorney. So maybe we should talk a little bit about whether we want to add something about your authority. For the building itself, the state statute, I think, gives us. Some, uh, ability. You don't have the title to the property. Let's see. Title to a property. The title, the properties, yeah, so. Hold on. I guess that could be, it's, it's an incidental power of the board perhaps. Purchase a real property. Yeah, I'm not sure. I'm not sure if there's anything in the state statute that, that kind of. Says that that's your authority, but I think you can do things beyond what's in the state statute. You know, like if it's something that the city is okay with, with. Being in our ordinance that, that you're going to have the authority for artwork at the library. They're okay with that and it doesn't conflict with the Public Arts Commission. I would think we could propose that we want to add something like that.
My presumption would be that if the state statute does not prohibit us. From taking on a role, then we can advocate for ourselves to have that role. And then again, as you've said, it's up to the city attorney and city council to determine if there's any reason that we should not have that role.
And I think that when it comes to things inside the library, we should have purview over that. I don't want to be responsible for the building.
Okay.
The city's got a whole maintenance department that takes care of their buildings and things. And the last thing we want to do is get in the middle of that. And then we have to start thinking about, well, who are we going to contract with to fix the roof? So.
No, I'm thinking more about art, just artwork.
Yeah, I agree with that. Yeah, let's keep it kind of narrow.
Yeah, not, not struc- not structure. We're not responsible for the structure, for the, the actual physical plant of the building. We're responsible for the, um.
Interior fixtures?
Decoration and fixtures, yeah. Not even fixtures, decoration. I think we're, we're responsible for, for decoration. Uh, and equipment as opposed to fixtures, because I don't want to be responsible for which kind of, um, you know, shelving do you get?
Right, and, and if anything, again, your role would be advisory. You might advise us on something. But I don't know that we need to spell that out, you know, already do it. I mean, Bianca advised that when we get shelving downstairs, we get movable shelving. So you, you already can advise us on these things because we bring them to you to discuss them anyways.
Um, I, I want to weigh in on off gassing.
Oh, you do? You're big on off gassing? Okay.
Okay.
That's your big thing. Got it. Um, okay, back to what are our questions? So artwork, we'll, we'll see if we can get something in there about that.
Um, Kathy, on that person, external is also not going to be in our purview, right? Like we can make a.
No, I think we'd like it to be.
Do one.
Well, I think.
Sorry, out exterior artwork, like murals on that exterior of the building.
Yeah, yeah, just artwork, but interior and exterior. Because.
So like art, we would make the final decision on whether a mural on the outside of the building would be done or not.
I think you would still be probably, I don't think the city council will go for that. So you're probably, basically you're taking. You're going to have authority that maybe preempts the public art commission is my guess. Uh, but that the council.
Yeah.
Is still, but we'll have to check on that.
What, what about things like if someone wants to put a statue up in front of the library? Do we have any say over that?
I think we should have grounds. I think it should be exterior and grounds. For just that reason, Mario, that, you know, if somebody wants to put in a, a new bench or, or something like that, we should have the ability to. You know, if it's a, uh, I, I don't want to pigeonhole anything or anyone, but a, a group. Comes in, you know, the, the American Nazi Party wants to, uh, provide picnic tables with their logos on them. I think we should be able to say, we think that's a bad idea. It doesn't.
Yeah, yeah, I think we should, we should have some control over the grounds. I agree with that.
Well, can't we say something like that? We have control or management of, uh, something like the, the real. Or.
Kathy's right. I don't think city council is going to give us control, but I think that we should have, uh, the ability to, to provide advice and counsel. Uh, regarding.
Sort of like the way, if you think about the Cultural Heritage Commission, like they, they're the arbiters. Of those types of properties. So, so they have to be asked first. They even like to be asked about our building when it isn't, you know? Um, so this would like that, like the library board to be asked, yes.
It's, it's actually to me like the, the budget.
Yeah.
You know, the city council is responsible for the budget, but we advise them. The city council owns the building and the grounds, but we advise them.
Yeah, yes. And I think, you know, we've always said, oh, they have to ask the board about these things, but the fact is, it doesn't say so. So now we want it to say so too, you know? I mean, we've always said, oh, well, the board gets to say, but.
So that would be, that's the, um, the, the flip side of it. Not only do we get to provide input. But I think that it should be, if we can get it in the municipal code, that the city council will, uh, ask our. For our advice and counsel before making decisions that affect the, um. And we, here we need language, the, uh, the look and feel of the interior and exterior as well as the grounds. Of the library properties.
Just think we could have not had that bike shelter if we had, you know, this was a thing we had.
Well, I was the one who protested when it was going in.
I didn't even know it was going in. That was a real fiasco.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so I, let's, we'll have to think again. I might be reaching out to you, Dean, a little bit.
Happy to help.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I always have a one, uh, just while, while we're on the subject is on, because this is another confusing thing. What is the real property of the library?
Meaning what do you mean?
That we have, if we, if we're, so like somebody told me that the library park isn't the real, that doesn't belong. That you don't have any say so in that. We, so I mean, what is, what is the boundaries? What, what is it that we're?
That's always, nobody knows. I mean, that's always the problem. You know, somebody asks about something and, and we're, we talk to Sheila and we go back and forth. As I said, in our conversation with the city manager, police chief and Sheila. They are interested in having the library's code of conduct applied to the entire park. So if you take that logic. It extends maybe to the same discussion, you know? I mean, I, I had said originally, I don't want the whole park. Just give me, you know, the, the area where the wifi works or come up with some boundary that, that is, makes sense. I don't want to have to be enforcing something on the bench on the corner by your house, you know? So, but they were like, no, do the whole park. So that, that is not a finished discussion, I don't think. But it, it could be that whatever that discussion ends up looking like applies. To this authority as well. I don't, I don't know, but I think there's maybe more discussion of that with. The people who have a vested interest in the park.
Have, do, does, do we know if the, um, the senior, the new senior, not the new, but the senior center, the, the, the board? Have they talked about their, you know, their perimeters or parameters of what they're interested in?
I don't know. I don't know. You mean in terms of physical space? Um, no, I don't know. We can ask. I doubt it because they don't go outside. I mean, the senior center is very inside kind of thing, you know, the seniors, I mean, they don't.
But, 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 but there is, but it, it would be nice, again. It, it, because it, what is frustrating is when there's inconsistency, when you ask somebody about, well, what is the real property? That we're talking about. No one, and someone says, well, call, call this, call that, it belongs.
So could we advocate for a definition?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's, I think if we say library grounds, we have to define what that means.
Yeah.
I, I think, I think it means the entire block except for the senior center.
Yeah, it, and that, the other, the other, um, precedent for that, Dean, is that when we do. Uh, ban someone or, or suspend their library privileges, it applies to the library. And the library park except for the senior center and the senior center's entryway.
Yeah, I think, I think that's the definition. It's the, it's, the library park should be defined as. The, the square block bordered by whatever the heck they all are. I've only lived here seventeen years. I, I should know the name of the streets. Um, but, uh, I think that that should be the definition, excluding the senior center, uh, and its entryway.
And then that would then include the, uh, uh, the community, the community.
Room.
On the old central side.
Yeah.
It would.
Is it the community room part of a library?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. And again, like I said, this, this, this is the direction that that group of people was going, city manager, city police, you know, police chief. The idea that, yeah, that's your park. I mean, you know, it's not like Garfield Park or Orange Grove Park. It's not, it's different. It's, it's your park. It's library park. So, okay, so we'll.
And just as a courtesy though, I would recommend that we get the senior committee involved because. Yeah, I wouldn't want us to say, okay.
Yeah.
Help you guys out and then they're, they're asked to put a mural on their side. Um, yeah, so it would be nice to be consistent.
Would the, uh, historical, what's the actual name?
Cultural Heritage Commission.
Heritage Commission. Would the Cultural Heritage Commission have access to or input in? The definition of that by virtue of historical knowledge of what has, has it been considered? Anecdotally in the past.
Wasn't only the historical part is only the L central side? Well, and this.
No, but I mean historic, not, not necessarily it from a historical landmark point of view, but. Throughout historically, meaning throughout time, what has been considered to be the library? Does it, has it been considered to include the, the grassy areas surrounding the building on all sides?
Sounds like a job for Olivia. We'll have, we'll have our local, we, we can talk to Cultural Heritage, but we can have Olivia. Look at our local history librarian, look into that. Uh, let me make a note to myself so I know what my note means tomorrow.
Well, that would be like an example, Dean, would be like then if, um, so some of the, uh, the statues that have been donated to the library. Then really we're, we need to protect those and that's their outside and those need to be protected. And so we're kind of, we manage those, right? Um, the things that are on the outside.
We are, I mean, we are.
I think so. And, and, you know, it, I don't know how many we get and how often people want to give us one. But we could be developing a, a sculpture garden area, you know? To make, to augment the, the library grounds.
Well, and I think if, once we settle this authority piece, we go back to the policy about artwork. And what we accept and what we don't accept and what we display and what we don't display. I mean, right now, we didn't draft that because Diana said, I don't know who has the authority to do so, right? So if we create this and, and we do have the authority and you guys can create a policy that dictates all of that stuff. So I think that would be great. Um, that's pretty much, uh, everything that I had to go over. Does, do you guys have other thoughts, other things we should be changing, thinking about, adding? And again, we'll revisit it all once we kind of. Massage it all back into one, one document.
Um, I think, I think you're, you're, you're spot on, you know, with the augmentations that we've talked about here. You're spot on though, that the bylaws and the, the code should basically mirror each other. But not necessarily word for word, but, uh, in, in construct and concept.
Okay.
There's consistency, because that way, God forbid, there's ever litigation over any of this. Someone would pick apart very significantly any differentiation between them.
Right. Okay, okay. Well, thank you guys. That makes, this makes me very happy. This is something that since I came, I've been. You know, it's just, and every time we have new board members come on, on board. Trying to, trying to make sure everybody knows what their role is and when I'm not even sure and it's been unclear or whatever. So this will be, I think, a really, a really big achievement for, for the board to have done. So thank you.
Um, I, I do need to, uh, leave a little early. I apologize. Um, I'll throw in my comment now. That, uh, this has been a great discussion, uh, and as Kathy has noted, uh, one long past due. And I look forward to, uh, getting it wrapped up, uh, this, this calendar year.
And thank you, Dean, for bringing in your, uh, law head.
Yeah, thank you so much, Dean, for all your knowledge.
Happy to assist.
Good night, Dean. Bye, Dean.
All right. Now we're going to go back to the agenda and thank you, everybody. That was a good discussion. Um, I think, uh, that's going to, uh, help. Kathy and the staff.
All right. We already did the minutes.
We did the minutes, we did the minutes.
So it's, it's just me.
We did. Library operations update.
Yes, so your favorite part of the meeting, listening to me go on. I'll try to be concise. So, uh, we did submit a letter to the anti bias club, um, that you guys were emailed. And they, uh, and let them know that, that the board, you know, that though they hadn't taken a formal. and they, uh, and let them know that, that the board, you know, that though they hadn't taken a formal action on it, the consensus was that they would not recommend to the city council that a mural be, uh, placed on the outside of the building. So they responded and said, thank you, and we'll keep looking for another place. So that was nice. Uh, parcel tax, um, make a, a long story short, the parcel tax, uh, tax levy was uploaded on time to the county assessor. So we will be, people will be paying their taxes and we'll be getting that money. Um, the estimate, uh, for the tax, the total for the tax levy this year is three hundred and sixty-five thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars and thirty-eight cents. So that's up about fifteen thousand from last year. The CPI U increase was like three point nine nine, it's just under four percent. So it's pretty big CPI uh, increase, which is why that amount is what it is. And the new firm, so this is the first year we're using a new firm for this, uh, parcel tax administration and they were really great, uh, giving us a lot of, um, expertise and, and technology that they have, that they, you know, put, put to work for this type of, of work. So I was really pleased with, with them. Um, next.
Can I, can I, where does that, where, is there an account for that? Is there a, where does that money go to?
There is an account in the city's budget that it goes into.
And it's, it's very clear?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it has to be used for the library. I mean, the way that it works is it.
So it doesn't go to the general fund?
No, I think it goes into its own account, although eventually it must go into the general fund because we just spend it. I'm not quite sure, but it's, the, the way that they determine that, uh, you know, there's the, the maintenance of effort, the city has to pay their share. So as long as we spend X amount over that, that fair share, then we've spent that money.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, but it does have its own, you know, it's the same as sales tax. Yeah, sales tax goes somewhere and this tax goes somewhere and sewer tax and all those taxes go somewhere. Um, next, I will give you a one city, one, uh, sorry, a summer reading program update next month. I have a write-up from, or maybe I'll email it to you. I have a write-up from the staff. Um, it was, it was a good summer reading program. We had maybe half the participation from last year. Is that about right? Maybe, maybe more than that, but, um, you know, I think for being virtual and being in the middle of this crazy time, you know, it was good. And people are picking up their prizes and, and are happy and we got some good feedback. Um, but I can share that, that information with you. Um, library hours starting next Friday, we're gonna start opening at 10:00 AM on Fridays and Saturdays. So sort of creeping back to our regular hours, we're still, still gonna stick with one to seven, Monday through Thursday for now. Um, just sort of watching the infection rates and keeping an eye on how things are going, but I think that opening earlier on Friday and Saturday will spread out the, um, visitors to the children's room over a longer period of time, which is good. We'll give them a little maybe more breathing room in there.
And then are we going to, um, uh, we're gonna track numbers, so I don't know if this has to be, uh, put on a future agenda, but can we then discuss the, uh, library hours again?
Yeah.
Do we, do we have to put it on an agenda or do we want to wait for like three months, six months or?
Well, I think that the intent is to go back to our regular hours. I mean, when the city gave us the sixty-four thousand dollars in the part-time budget, the, the purpose of that was to enable us to be open. And I'll give you an update about staffing. Um, so that the intent is that we go back to seven days a week, fifty-seven hours, and that's why they gave us that money. So that's, that's the intent, but of course, we don't have those people hired yet. So, um, between COVID and not having the staff, we can't quite go back to fifty-seven hours yet, but little by little.
So we can, we can re, in, we can, we can relook at it, re, okay, okay.
Yeah, sure. But I mean, the, the expectation that the city has is that we're gonna go back to seven days a week. Like they, that's, I don't think that's really a, an option to not do so, but we can talk about it and think about it and make that, make that request if we want to do something different. Yeah. Um, let's see, what else? Uh, so on to recruitment. So we are, we have three vacant aid positions, but I think we've got three offers made and people are in the pipeline. So hopefully they'll be starting very soon. And we did put in recruitments for, uh, requisitions for these, what we're considering weekend person in charge type librarians who would help us to be open on Saturday and Sunday. Um, so those have not posted yet. I haven't even heard, they haven't even asked for a job description. Anyway, those haven't posted, but hopefully they will soon because we really do need, um, you know, librarians in order to, to open more hours and open on Sunday. Um, let's see. Dean had mentioned the idea of a development impact fee and that was something we were looking into. So just so you have an update on that, I did meet in July, uh, last part of July with the planning director and, and staff from her department and got some information about what that entails. We would have to do something called a nexus study, which, you know, identifies, you know, what is the nexus between this development and the services you provide? Um, so I reached out to a couple of, um, consultants to just sort of get a feel for what that might be like and how much that might cost. Uh, but I haven't heard back from them, so I need to follow up with that and see if I can get ahold of someone. But I think that, um, it, it could still be something we, we want to pursue. So we'll keep trying to get the information and then make a decision about it. Um, let's see what else. I thought you'd be interested just to know that the County of Los Angeles Library is fine free. They just went fine free everywhere. So that's, that's big. Um, uh, what else? We, yesterday I, uh, submitted a grant for matching funding for a security camera system that would be inside and outside. I don't know how likely it is we'll get the funding, but if we get it, the city told me they would find the money to match it, so we can get it done. So that's exciting. Um, let's see what else. Uh, I guess the biggest thing we should talk about, and this probably deserves more time and we can talk about it next month, is the state library. Uh, a state of California has four hundred and thirty-nine million dollars for library infrastructure improvements. And that's gonna be a competitive, uh, process to get those funds. The max grant is ten million dollars and it's a one-to-one, a dollar-for-dollar match. So, you know, we, whatever we might ask for, we have to be able to back it up with our match. Um, and the staff have been thinking a lot about this, uh, coming out of the pandemic and some of the things that we learned from the pandemic about needing an outdoor space, needing a space where we can, um, do programming outside. Uh, is something that we're interested in and something that I think the state library has indicated would be of interest. So we're, we're tossing this idea around that that might be something that we, we put together as a request, that we request funding to develop something like that for the area that, where the picnic tables are in front of the library. Um, but obviously we have to talk about this in more detail. Um, maybe next month we can do that. Uh, other options are, uh, lighting for the ADA ramp. That's another possibility.
Yeah.
I mean, basically there, the money is for, well, they're looking to, to create equity, so they want, you know, they're looking to help communities that are not well-funded. But I think that being in a big metropolitan area like we are and, and the number of cardholders we have from other communities around us and being close to the metro, even though our standard of living in South Pasadena is maybe higher than some other communities, uh, I think we might be competitive. But, um, we'll talk about this more a little bit later. The grant guidelines have not been issued yet, so I only know what the state librarian has told us. Uh, but I haven't seen the actual guidelines. So hopefully by September, maybe those will have been issued and we can talk about that a little bit more. Um, we are gonna start doing some outdoor programming, uh, in front of the library in that picnic table area. So starting in September, we're gonna do outreach stuff on Thursday nights during farmer's market. So we'll be making library cards, you know, just general basic library outreach. Um, we're also gonna do, um, one city, one story voting for the, the citywide reading program will be happening at the beginning of September. So we're gonna be out there getting people to vote for their choice for the one city, one story title. And we also are intending to do storytime outside because we still feel like we can't do it inside in person. Um, our space is too small. So that's the plan for outside.
But we're gonna need, we're gonna need to make some modifications though, cause there's no like shade covering.
Yeah, we, we'll, we have, we'll have a tent.
More seating. Yeah.
Well, the kids sit on the grass, but, yeah. So we have a pop, we'll have a pop-up tent. Um, but yeah, so that'll start in September. So that'll be, we'll see how that goes and we'll see if that changes the dynamic of that particular space at all. Um, we'll see how that goes. Um, let's see, what else? Oh, the last thing, and Sally's gonna probably talk about this in her update, but, um, in terms of the, uh, Twenty First Century Committee for the library and thinking about what the library needs, I can't remember what we've talked about, if we've talked about this before or not, but the thinking, the thinking that the Twenty First Century Committee for the library has come to is that we really need to get a, um, what's like a library future planning, physical future planning study. So, so you look at the facility, you look at the, the, the population, you look at the statistics of readership, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And basically come up with what you think is the right ideal features and amenities of a library. Um, and I, I talked to a consultant who's probably the main consultant that does that kind of work. He's done it for like thirty years and we had a great conversation. And so we're gonna, we're going to, um, put together kind of a scope of work or an RFP informal, uh, because it's professional services, so it doesn't have to be too, too formal. And gets, and see if we can get some bids on undertaking that process. Um, and I think that will be a great thing for us to have, both in terms of anything that, that the Twenty First Century Committee does and also in terms of, of supporting any requi, any grant request we make to the state for the funds. You know, having some kind of baseline that, that says, you know, an expert has looked at this and according to their expertise, you know, you should have this many conference rooms and you should have this much shelving space and you should have this many computer workstations. Um, I think that that would be a really important thing for us to have as we have all these discussions about expansion or, you know, totally independent of whether the senior center ever is ours and independent of, you know, where we might put these things, we would know at least that these are things we probably should have. And if we can do it before the strategic plan, then we can also take that to the people and say, you know, we had this study done. And what do you think? Do you think we need that many, you know, conference rooms or what would you like to see? Um, and just have a starting place instead of just having people just throwing out all kinds of ideas. At least we would have this sort of, you know, here's what a really good library, the size should look like. What do you think about it? Um, so that is something we're gonna be working on as quickly as we can. Um, depending on the cost, I don't know what the cost is. I don't, I don't have a, a budget for it and I'm thinking it might be a good use of Ro mine and Mullen funds. So that would be the board, um, determining whether that was a good use of those funds and, and recommending or deciding to use them for that purpose. So hopefully I can get you, uh, pretty soon, maybe, maybe in September. I don't know. We'll see. Maybe in September I will have more information for you. Um, and I think that that is it. I will, I will stop there and, um, well, I guess since we won't meet till September. So again, one city, one story is the citywide reading program. The staff have done a ton of work on it. They've got a great video, um, that introduces all the titles. There's five titles to choose from. And so that'll all be launching for the voting September first. And then, uh, we'll announce the winner at the end of September. And the programming, the, the discussions and the lectures and the things that are happening will start in October, right? October and into November, I think. And as far as in-person, uh, activities and programs, we do have some in-person stuff for one city, one story. And I think those things will be fine because there's spot, smaller numbers of people. But there definitely are questions and concerns about the restoration concerts and other big events and how that's going to, how that's going to look. You know, at this point, the September, the, the restoration concert that's scheduled for September would be the first of any kind of big city event that's happened in a year and a half. So there's definitely, uh, it's not gonna be just up to us whether we do that or not. So we'll see where we go with that. But that's all that I have. If you guys have questions, I'm happy to answer any questions you have, any questions.
Thank you. You always give a good operations update. We appreciate it. So thank you. Um, moving on to communications. Um, uh, board president, I have no, nothing more to add. Um, and so we'll just, uh, go around to our board members. Annie, do you have any comments?
Um, nothing more to add. Just thank you for, uh, that report Kathy and really excited to see if that, um, study can go forward. I feel like it could give us a lot of really great information. So thank you for, um, looking into that.
Mario.
I have little to add. All I want to say is Kathy, thank you to you and your staff for that really comprehensive review of all the charters and bylaws and so forth of all the other libraries. It was helpful.
Dean already thanked, and David's not with us tonight. Um, and, uh, uh, Annie, I don't know if you heard it from the beginning, uh, uh, Mayor Diana Mamud isn't able to attend this month or next month's meeting. So she's, and Sally.
I'm gonna turn this around so Sally can.
Yeah.
There's Sally. Everybody. Hi, Ed, uh, good evening. As Kathy mentioned, uh, Twenty First Century Committee met and David Ewens is our liaison. Uh, we met privately with the city manager, uh, several representatives from their friends. And after meeting with her, we decided to, uh, focus on the upcoming strategic planning for the city as well as for what's going to be happening with the library before we embark on any capital fundraising. Uh, and Kathy did also mention the library facilities, uh, study that we could be helpful, um, in supporting. Uh, city manager urges to be involved in the city strategic planning, particularly the CIP program where the buildings will be evaluated, what needs to be upgraded and make sure that the library is included. Uh, so as a result of this, uh, kind of deferred or postponed focus, the team room that we had been working on with, uh, several of our members, uh, that project is on hold. And over the next few months, uh, we'll be working on policies and procedures for our committee so that we're ready when the opportunity arises, uh, and the committee structure that we'll need. And as Kathy mentioned, there's significant money available from the state for library infrastructure. And we plan to offer support wherever she needs that, uh, when the guidelines come out and we apply. The retreat, we have an annual retreat every year. And, uh, we're having that next week at the historic Milton Moore Hall House, thanks to the generosity of the Molinas. Uh, one item is to consider, uh, applying for the services of Jericho Road, Pasadena. Um, this is a nonprofit that assists nonprofits and Bianca has mentioned, uh, she's used it for several of her, uh, organizations. Uh, they help with such areas as fundraising, information systems, marketing and organizational development. And I'm interested in how best to structure a nineteen board, almost totally volunteer-run organization with a lot of responsibilities. Uh, Restoration Concerts Committee, as Kathy mentioned, um, uh, is got their program set for the, the season, uh, eight concerts. Uh, we have new chairs, Lori Astle and Janet Urban. And the longtime, uh, co-chairs have resigned. The tickets are being sold for September twelfth and are approximately seventy-five tickets, uh, sold, so to date. Um, they're not selling at this point any individual tickets because of the various distancing uh, requirements and it's spacing in the building. The bookstore, as you know, bookstore is operating on a limited schedule with plans to open more hours. We have additional, uh, volunteer application. The bookstore, as you know, bookstore is operating on a limited schedule with plans to open more hours. We have additional uh volunteer applications that if. Uh, people have applied and they've been approved. Uh, and another book sale will be held uh September eighteen. And uh the kiosk, uh, maybe you're aware of the kiosk that the Friends approved for the library. It's a laptop tablet dispensing kiosk, and um the librarians have uh been looking at vendors and have a recommended uh model. And we'll be voting on that in our our September meeting. And two of us are going to serving with a purpose on September first, and that's my report.
Thank you, Sally.
Any questions?
And David's not here as the trustee.
Yes.
So we will give that our. Yeah, but he he attended the last meeting, didn't he?
Yeah, and he attended the uh Twenty-First Century.
Yeah, and you you know, in in your report, you you mentioned about the that the city manager, this uh the strategic city all.
Yeah.
Planning, and then so it seems like hopefully all of this aligns.
I think it does.
You know, that, you know.
Yeah, so.
Consultant that we do, we all are, it's just, yeah, we're all, yeah, so we're not, yeah.
Yeah, so I think I'm next anyway, so I'll just follow on to that. So the the city has uh selected a firm, I think, that next week's council meeting, they will. You know, agree to that contract. Um, they're using somebody named, I don't know if I'm allowed to say it. I know they 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 put the packet out today, so. It's out. So it's a, it's a person named Patrick Abara, who I have um not worked with, but I've been in his uh staff development type work. With the city of Glendale, and um I liked him a lot, so I'm excited that he's doing the city strategic plan. Um, the city manager, her goal is to have the strategic plan completed by the end of the calendar year. And our timeline is to do our strategic planning starting in the new calendar year. So I think it does dovetail, and I think that uh, you know, the the Patrick Abara will be talking to all the department heads, and so I'm gonna tell him, you know. We're gonna be embarking on this and, you know, how do we, how do we make the most of whatever you're doing and then lead into whatever we're doing? And when I talked to the facilities um study plan consultant, he and I talked about this also, like in an ideal world. Me, you would, you would probably do different consultants, but you would probably try to kind of combine your strategic planning with your space planning. But we can't do that because we are on a time, you know, we need that space planning study, I think, um, for so many reasons. And so, but that's okay, you know, you go back to it and and change it if if you learn something in your strategic plan. So yes, I think that the timing is all kind of dovetailing nicely together.
Did you have any other comments under?
Nope.
You know, I I did forget. I I'm gonna go back. I did have a a a comment, and this is just something. Um, some of us who might have gotten were the the senior center, the classroom ribbon-cutting is next Monday. Uh, this is just an idea that I kind of was thinking about. Is is this? Are the this is the senior center in the library, is it, is there a physical barrier? So there's no. There's no, there's no uh.
Way to.
There's no way to open up. So, yeah, okay. I I I I just thinking with all of this planning and we're all gonna be, I it looks, it it appears. All these both buildings are gonna be here for a while. I just thought, you know, just being creative and we gotta make do with what we have. It would be nice because, you know, that new classroom, because I just think as we do space planning. I I don't, the future of libraries, is it gonna be books?
Yeah.
Or is it gonna be more kind of creative, movable space?
Community.
Yeah, movable community, you know, community space, I don't know.
I have a couple of, I can feature that a little bit. I talked to Sheila about um kind of co-using the courtyard. And she's having a lot of new ideas about how to, I mean, she sees the senior center as as maybe it's more of a community center, like she wants to activate that courtyard for. For teens and tweens after school, and we do have a door into the courtyard from the children's room. So, and I said, can we use the courtyard, you know, can we, you know, do art programs out there, whatever, and she's like, yeah, sure. And then secondly, we used to teach classes in their computer lab in the way, yes, so we used to, we, library staff would go to the senior center. Computer lab and teach classes there because we don't have our own. So I would think, I haven't seen the new space. I've been meaning to go over there, but I'll go on Monday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I mean, these are, so this is again, like what we're talking about. I I'm hoping everybody uh collaborates because it would be. You know, everybody's got all these different plans, but you know, are we thinking about our neighbors right next door that we could collaborate and do something? Um, because, you know, we're so tight on space and.
We know, and didn't she want the city manager want to look at all these buildings and better using the space or something?
Has she, has she physically been in here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so definitely we'll, we'll see how we can, you know, what we can do or not do with that space if we. I mean, but there's definitely an interest among the staff and in providing technology. Education to to people who need it, so I don't know exactly what that's gonna look like, but.
Yeah, because that's a, it's a lovely courtyard and it's it's really underutilized, I think.
Well, that's, yeah, that's what I really, well, and and it came up in this context of we can't do storytime inside, can we get it in the courtyard? I mean, we decided it's a little tight in there, so we're gonna do it out in front, but um. But yeah, I mean, she's, Sheila is more than happy for us to to use that space, so we'll start thinking about that.
Good, great. All right, um, any, well, you know, I just, when I, when we got invited to, and it's a lovely new room.
Have you, you seen it?
Oh, yeah.
Is it really nice?
Yeah.
Oh.
That's why I delivered the hand sanitizer.
Oh.
Huge box of hand sanitizer that I gave you. Um, yeah, it's just a lovely room, and then I thought, I thought, can you, can you get into that area through the library?
No, but again, maybe that's a a less expensive, uh, the problem is security for us. I mean, obviously, like, we can't have people roaming. From the library into the senior center with all of our stuff, but uh, but definitely it's something to think about, about, you know, whether we should be. Better connected to the courtyard and then the courtyard to the senior center. You know, there's a big nice door on the senior center side of the courtyard, like sliding glass kind of door. So even if we, even if we had a connection like.
All right, well, are there any other Barbara or Maida, any other comments or? Any other comments, anybody? All right, well, then I will uh adjourn the meeting at eight thirty-eight, and thank you, everybody. Again, this was a very lively conversation. And I hope you got a lot of ideas and, and thank you, everybody, for participating and.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.